Good afternoon and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee Meeting. In attendance today, we have myself, Mark Conway, Chair of the Committee, representing the 4th District; Councilman Cohen, representing the 1st District; Councilwoman Porter, representing the 10th District; and Councilwoman Ramos, representing the 14th District. Representing the Office of the President, I don't see anybody here at the moment, and representing the Mayor's Office, I've got Nina Themelis. This afternoon, the committee will hold a hearing on LO-22-0030 Legislative Oversight, Crime Reduction and Violence Prevention, for the purpose of the committee holding regular hearings with the Police Department, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety Engagement, and other agencies to monitor the progress of the city's crime reduction and violence prevention efforts. To further clarify what this meeting is about today, today's hearing topic is specifically to discuss the Citation Docket Initiative that was rolled out this summer by the State's Attorney's Office. I personally was very hopeful about this piece of policy and the idea as it was first introduced, and I'm really interested here today to explore what outcomes we've seen as a result of the program. Specifically, I want to know what's been working, what hasn't been working. The data that we've received before this hearing doesn't seem to paint an abundantly clear picture of how the Citation Docket Initiative is working yet, so I want to hear about some of the standard procedures for different violations in order to better identify any potential missing pieces in the program. I think we also want to hear about what BPD and the State's Attorney's Office, what their day-to-day looks like as a result of this operation, to understand the ins and outs of it. All in all, I really want us to be honest and open about where our enforcement arm versus our prosecution arm needs support, both from the council and from each other. We must always be working together to move this effort forward in partnership. Otherwise, I think we risk misconnections, confusion, and disagreements, which can lead to a breakdown in the overall structure and strategy of the Citation Docket Initiative. Lastly, I'm interested in examining what have been the high-level takeaways from this initiative. This program was designed to bring quality-of-life crimes down and to make the city a friendlier, healthier, and safer place for all of us to live, and ultimately, we want to know, are we seeing that happen? Numbers aside, is a city happier? Is it healthier? Do citizens have more faith in law enforcement agencies to carry out orders to protect them? Are we seeing some of the tangible benefits from the policy since we rolled it out? And, you know, I think we'd also want to know about the wraparound services that we've been offering to folks as part of the initiative. I personally believe that it's really important that vulnerable citizens that are a part of this initiative have access to services that the city provides through our partners like MONCIE, so that they can grow and learn from their encounter with the Citation Docket Initiative. Above all, we know that, you know, no office is perfect, and no initiative is perfect. A lot of these efforts are going to be iterative. We're going to learn along the way. So, I just hope that, you know, through this process, we can continue to have an open, honest, transparent conversation about how things are going so that we can figure out how to make them better. So, with that, we'll just dive in. First, I understand we're going to hear from BPD, and so I will offer up to Commissioner Warren.
Yeah. Good afternoon, Chairman Conway, members of the committee. I just want to go through our normal monthly slides so that you see where we are as far as clearance rates and different numbers of, as far as where we are year-to-date. As you'll see on the very first slide that we get to, it's going to have the clearance rates.
And I just wanted to acknowledge, from the Council President's Office, we have Dexter and Tiffany in the back. Thank you, guys. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Did you go back one? The first slide had clearance rates on it. All right, you didn't have the clearance. But I'll tell you where the clearance rates are. What we're doing, as you know, we're with case management, so those slides, I guess they were removed because the numbers were not accurate. But where we are today with homicides, our clearance rate is 41% compared to 38% last year. If you add in the open warrants, we're up around 46%. Our non-fatal shooting clearance rates are at 21% compared to 19% last year, and if you add in the warrants, those take it up to 24%. And basically, what that means, once we make the arrest for the warrant that we have, that case will become closed. It doesn't get closed until the arrest is made. And in the slide you're looking at now, this is some of the information that we really want to put out there. Narcotics violations, 889 felony narcotic violations, which is significant. It's compared to 700 last year, up about 27%. Our handgun violations, 943. We've actually seized over 1,000 guns this year. I believe it's over 1,500 guns already this year. Robberies arrests at 267, attempted murder, 126, and murder at 64. And I know it's not on here, but with our, we went through something yesterday about when we were giving out the clubs at the press conference. We arrested over 250 adults for stolen auto and over 140 juveniles for stolen autos. Those are significant because we are up 200% in stolen autos. Next slide shows the gun-related arrests. 2023, 961 gun arrests, it's down 7% from last year. Gun arrests from patrol, which the majority of the enforcement components fall under the patrol division, and then you'll see the non-patrol divisions. They're down simply because a lot of the units that used to work there are now encompassed in the patrol segment. Citywide crime, you can see we're down 19% in homicides. Right now, today, we are down, we have had 49 less homicide victims as opposed to where we were this time last year, and we've had 54 less shooting victims as compared to where we were this time last year. And these numbers are basically, the ones you're looking at now are through 819. Those numbers I gave you are as of today. We are struggling a little bit. Robberies have escalated lately. We're only up around 2%. At one point, we were up 6%. Part of that is with a recent increase in carjackings, but as you can see, our carjackings are still down year-to-date. But that is a recent thing that we've had to deal with. And as you know, probably know the case last week where we tried to stop the three people in the vehicle when they shot at our officers, two of the three were under the age of 18. And then you go to domestic and youth. Unfortunately, the youth violence is where we are really suffering this year. We've had a lot more incidents where our young people have been, become a victim. And you can see those numbers, the shooting victims are up 50%. And in robbery victims are also up 79%. And mostly, those are street robberies because your carjackings are usually not going to be a young person, and the street robberies are usually where those are going to occur. Next slide. And then you go, youth violence, juveniles involved in homicides and shootings, you can see as a victim where we are from 2013 to 2023. Suspect 33, person of interest 41. Then you go to age of arrest for juvenile adult charges. You can see we've made, 2023, we made 154 arrests for adult charges. Those are just the individuals that we've arrested up, for adults. We have made 470, I believe it was 470, almost 500 juvenile arrests thus far this year, which was up significantly. And then these are from the Department of Juvenile Services, juvenile arrests. And then we go to the next slide. That's it. That was pretty much the end of the presentation for where we are, stand today with their violence crime.
Thank you, Commissioner. Before actually we jump into your presentation, Mr. State's Attorney, do you mind if we open the floor for questions? All right, I'll do that because there are a couple of basic questions that I've got. I know, just sort of looking through the numbers here, we know this has been an issue across the board. Auto thefts are way up across the city. I'm not sure how we're thinking about getting that down. I know a lot of that is based on weaknesses in manufacturing for certain cars, Kias, and I believe Hyundais. Is there anything else we can do? We mentioned the bars. Can you tell me a little bit about what we're doing to that effort?
We put out over 2,700 clubs so far this year. They were...
The mic.
2,700 clubs were provided by Hyundai and Kia. Just the other day at the meeting, we had over, almost 300 of them, we gave out. The mayor and I participated in that. The Hyundai and Kia members, owners came up and were given clubs. We're also working with the mayor as far as, because a lot of these young people are the ones that are stealing our vehicles repeatedly. So, we're working with the mayor and the governor to put some legislation into effect to hold them more accountable, because seven juveniles we arrested multiple times already for multiple stolen autos, 10 adults we arrested for stolen autos multiple times. And we've been putting out information about, don't leave your car running with the keys in the ignition, don't leave a spare key in your car, make sure your cars are locked, because we see those and we read those every day. People pull up to a store, leave their car running, they go into the store, that's the easiest way to steal it. But the way they're stealing it is they're, it's online that you can use a USB port and steal the Hyundai and Kia relatively easily. It doesn't work on the push starts, but those are some of the things. We're trying to educate as many people as we can. We even had officers drive their posts, and if they see a Hyundai, a Kia vehicle, they look up the, they look up the registration, and they go and offer the person a club at their house. So, we're trying to do everything we can to get the potential victims to try to help. And then we just got to hold the young men and women who steal the vehicles accountable.
That's a really interesting idea, having officers look up registration to figure out who the owner of the vehicle is. I wonder if through coordination with the state, we could figure out who has registered Kias or...
We did that. It was like 20,000. There was some astronomical number, but we tried to put more and more information out. We tried to do it in the districts. That never went over really well. We didn't give out as many...
Do we do mailers or...
We had people, we wanted people to come into the districts, but a lot of people just never came into the districts to get them. So, we, the other day is when we went out to have something like we did the other, that was a huge success, because we had people lined up for a couple hours to get their club. And we can do, we want to continue to do things like that, just to make sure our people are aware that these vehicles are being stolen. They account for about 40, 30% to 40% of our stolen autos are Hyundais and Kias.
Okay.
But that, I mean, that still means there's 60%, 70% of the other type of vehicles that are stolen. And a lot of those, we see, and it's frustrating because we see it still every single day, where people go into a store, they leave their car running, or they'll be at their home and they leave a spare key to... We had one, the individuals broke into the car and stole the one car, and they had a spare key to the other car, and they stole both cars. So, that's some of the things that we're trying to do. I mean, I was a culprit of that myself, so I ended up taking my keys out of my, my wife and I removed the keys from our cars. So, it's something that, just awareness, because it's something that's jumping up, and it's really driving our property crime.
I appreciate that. I just wanted to acknowledge, Councilman Burnett is joining the meeting. You talked a little bit about some of the legislative discussions for this upcoming session around accountability, noting that we're seeing a lot of young people. I don't know if you're at liberty to discuss any of how we're thinking about those troubles or...
Well, we, actually, we will leave that to legislators.
Okay.
And the mayor is working with the governor to change a little bit of the, a little bit of the legislation for, because I know you've all seen the article where the 11-year-old kid had stolen like six cars.
Yeah.
I know that sounds like a criminal issue, but there's a reason why an 11-year-old is doing those things. There's something clearly wrong with the family, so...
Right.
Before he continues to do those things, let's get him to help or get his family to help that gets him out, because he's too, I mean, I can't imagine an 11-year-old stealing a car. It boggles my mind, because I see 11-year-olds doing a bunch of other things, and this kid's out doing criminal acts at that age that he should be out playing sport or an instrument or something...
Yeah.
Other than out doing car thefts.
And then, last issue, this is going back to the slide around juvenile violence involvement. I noticed we're still seeing that spike amongst violence involving young people. We noted 108 victims thus far this year. Do we have any new insights, any new efforts to begin working with our young people or identify maybe vulnerable young people?
Yeah, we are working with that through the governor, I mean, through the mayor's office. We have, we used to have a youth stat, and we're bringing that back, and we're going to try to quash some of these incidents that occur in school that escalated outside of the school. But we're also with, as far as the police department, we're in the process of bringing the Explorer Program back, which I didn't realize had completely gone away over the last couple of years. So, we're in the process of bringing that back, because at one point, when I was the major in the Northeast, I had like 15 explorers.
Right.
And it was a bunch of young people who wanted to be in law enforcement. Some of them changed their mind, but that's fine. They're getting guidance from officers, and some want to be cadets and a couple have become officers. But we just want to reach into the young people, but that starts at 14 to 20. I'm thinking of getting into the schools at an earlier age, because a lot of people brought up officer-friendly, which is what I grew up with. There's no reason our officers can't get in there and start teaching the DARE program more. They just can't go in, and they can go in and give some pointers, because we're not at a disadvantage, but we're not in the schools. The school police are, so they've got the relationships that we have to also start to build, and we can work with school police to do that. And then, one thing I was encouraged last night, they constantly talk about foot patrols, and that's one of the things that I'm going to push, and I talked to a young man last night. He didn't say it at the podium, but he came up to me afterwards and said, whatever they're doing, it was a major, the Western, whatever they were doing on Pennsylvania Avenue, the officers were out walking around, there was no enforcement, they were just walking around the neighborhood. So, I think some of our men and women are doing a great job with that, and I want to continue to push that. The only way we get to know the kids is if we walk out and talk to them.
Right. Going back to the 108 victims, I know we do victim reviews, I think, for young people.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any reports, numbers, or things that you can share with the committee to help us better understand what we know about the young folks involved? And, because I'm really trying to begin to think about this from a systemic perspective, if there are trends or key things that we as a committee might or should be thinking about to intervene, I want to have that on the top of my...
I don't have that information. I know our victim services works with the family and works with the mayor's office with victim services, because basically, they would provide all the wraparound services. We can, we can recommend them, and then they follow through with it. But I think some of the things that the mayor's office and the council have already put in, like the squeegee thing, that worked really well. It got a lot of the young people off the corners and off the, away from doing that work and into other things. But there's, even the curfew initiative over the summer, we didn't have any, we weren't involved in that, but there was, most of the young people went home before the curfew was up. So, I look at that as a success, and even, we watched this all along, even all the way up until the curfew was initiated. Most of our young people who were becoming victims were, would not have been in the curfew timeframe anywhere. There were few, but most of them happened earlier in the evening or during the day. So, it wasn't something that would have been affected. But then there are a few that are out there, like, what is a young person doing out at 3:00 AM, and they end up getting shot or killed? Parents, guardians, something that we have to work with the families to get them the help that they need.
Yeah. If you have any analysis on particularly that set of 108, or, you know, we maybe want to look back and include the young people who were victims in the previous year, anything that can help us understand trends or any information about what got them to that point, I would love for the committee to have some time to digest that.
I can tell that most of the victims have had some type of encounter with law enforcement in a negative way as far as a charge or an arrest or something where, and we see this all the time where, and that's why it's so important to get this 11-year-old who started out, I don't know if he started out stealing vehicles, but it will escalate. It'll go from a stolen vehicle, and then they're doing a carjacking, then they get their hands on a weapon, and it just escalates, and it will continue to escalate. But we've got to get those young people who need the wraparound services help, and those who need to be on monitors or who need discipline from the system, we have to get them that type of discipline to turn their lives around.
I appreciate it. Thank you. So, I'm going to hand off and start on this end and work our way down. I want to ask committee members to keep to one question, because I do want to make sure we get to the state's attorney and get to the meat of the hearing. And then also, I want to ask, you know, four questions. I know the Brooklyn report was just released today. I want to ask that we save that for a later hearing. We're going to have a full hearing on the Brooklyn report. So, Councilman Cohen.
My question actually was on the Brooklyn Day Report, so let me defer to my colleague and maybe come back in a minute.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I had a quick question. I noticed there were no numbers with regard to the number of citations that BPD actually gave out in the presentation. Do you have that data available?
Yes, we were actually saving for...
Oh, you're saving it for the second?
But I can tell you, the number, we have not given out that many. We've given out 50. What's happening, and I'm not disappointed in that, what we found is that we went back to our most effective least intrusive policy with low-level offenses. First thing is the officer shows up and maybe the person leaves. Second is a warning, and that's where most of the incidents are occurring. We give somebody a warning and they walk away. If they don't heed the warning, then we write a citation. And so, there are, we have written 50 citations, but that's the goal of the program. We don't really want to write a citation. We'd rather you just leave when we ask you to stop doing the behavior that is subject to a citation, and we look at that as a success.
And so, when you're writing those citations, how many of those individuals, they recommit that crime? So, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get at the place where, you know, if we are writing a citation, are they showing up to court? Are they being transitioned to community-based organizations? What is the process there?
I would let, I would probably defer to the state's attorney, Mr. Bates, about that. But what we do too, is I have to be transparent, that our data isn't quite as accurate as we want it to be, because Axon doesn't have a way of tracking it. So, we have to put issue, I mean, parameters in place so that Axon can track each one of our citations as far as who it was given to, all the specifics, so that we can make sure that we're doing it equitably throughout the city, and that what we, first, we got to know what the citations are for, where they're being distributed, whom they're being distributed by, and is there a certain group that's being targeted or being issued citations more so that it's an equitable process? We don't have that yet, but we're building that with Axon and through case management.
Okay. And the only reason why I'm asking that question is, one, I want to make sure that we are measuring those citations based on success, based on manpower, and also operations with, particularly within the Baltimore City Police Department. If that is not the case, then I feel like we need to pivot. While 50 may be a success within the department, I don't consider that a success, given the number of quality-of-life issues that you pull from 311 alone. I don't know if that is a significant amount for this type of program. So, thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a question just about how we're looking at the data based on redistricting. You do have one slide here about the gun-related based on last year's stats and this year's stats by district. So, I'm assuming that that's by, it's going to be tough, I guess, to get the data accurate for a while. So, my question is this, when will we start, like, what is the, is it six months from now that we'll start seeing, you know, district-by-district data for redistricting? Is it two months from now? I mean, there's just one slide, but there's also, like, I like the comparative where we're seeing, you know, quarter by quarter what's going on, and we just did redistricting, so...
Yeah, the redistricting, I'll defer to Director Campbell for this one.
Hi, Graham Campbell, Data-driven Strategies for BPD. So, for the year-over-year comparison, we will need a full year to go, right? We will be able to do month-by-month comparisons, obviously. The time will, but really until July, early July of next year will be when we'll get to see the normal sort of, here's what we look like, you know, last year at this time, and obviously for a full calendar year, six months after that. So, that's sort of, it's a longer process, and we do want at least six months, because there's, you know, looking at it in short bites is not going to be as informative, or there could be spikes or things like that. But that's, we're just really waiting for the time to build up.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, but I also know that my communities want to have 30-day data, so are we able to get that to them?
Yeah, so neighborhood, that's a great question. Neighborhood data is available now, right? Because we have those files, and neighborhoods didn't change, the districts did. So, you can search neighborhood, you can compare neighborhoods year-over-year. It's just the literal physical districts and those boundaries that we cannot compare. But for neighborhoods, we certainly can compare those over time.
So, if, like at the commanders' meetings, and they're pooling northern district, I'll just use northern district as an example, you can't do 30 days for the northern district month-by-month?
No, because we, I mean, we had, we'll have, I think, 30 days, we'll have 60 days eh, by the end of, so by the end of, probably in a couple of weeks. So, we'll have very tight data, right, for the entire district, but I could give neighborhood comparisons year-over-year again, because those haven't changed.
Okay, so the community associations just need to ask for it, because that came up in our meeting, that they...
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Can I tag on to that? So, are we unable to pull back into old data? Because I think it would be pretty helpful, even comparing our new districts on old data to see if the new distribution of resources has an impact on crime.
Sure. So, we're able to do, yeah, we haven't lost the data, but in terms of public reports and reporting, we're not doing district, over district comparisons year-over-year, because it's not fair, because the districts actually changed. But we are obviously able to say, hey, this area that was the Western District compared to next year, or for trends or that kind of thing. We can do that now, but in terms of all of our sort of real publications, it's really, when we talk about districts, we don't want to do that, because it's...
I think you're, you may or may not be understanding what I'm asking. I'm saying the new Western District, for instance, comparing the new Western District and the data that we have today to the previous Western, the previous data with the new boundaries. So, we're looking at the same boundaries today...
So, they say the geography of the...
Yeah.
Right, so the geography of the current Western versus the geography of the current Western before.
Exactly.
Right, correct.
So, I think that's helpful if, like, if we see, you know, for instance, for that same geography, a decline in crime, it tells me a couple of things, that the reallocation of resources, the change in posts and change in districts has had, that change has had some impact on maybe crime or ability to, yeah, so that would be helpful. I don't know if we can, or I don't know how much of a lift that would be, but that would certainly be interesting and helpful if...
Yeah, we'll have to take that as a follow-up, so I'll, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Sounds like it's a subject of another hearing.
And I can tell you that, I can tell you that I do my own little stick figure, stick number things, and the distribution of the shootings is pretty even. There's a couple districts that are one or two above, but everybody has roughly around the same. Unfortunately, with the robberies, the same district is leading right now that was leading before. So, that's something that we have to take a look at, because their boundaries change quite a bit.
Interesting. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Done.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Burnett, any questions? So, we're going to do one question for now, so we can allow the state's attorney to go.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, state's attorney, and colleagues. So, the question I had was, and I'm not sure if it's most appropriate for the state's attorney's office or BPD, but it was reported that there were pretty significant issues on, from an administrative perspective, on the Citation Docket this past August. There were, as it was analysis done, that showed that there were at least 25% resulted in arrest warrants being issued, because people didn't show up for court. However, there was a significant number of those citations that either didn't have a court date or a location, which can have a pretty significant impact on somebody's ability, if they're actively looking for a job or for housing, they now have an arrest warrant, or something that's searchable via case search that isn't their fault. So, what steps are we taking to ensure that the accuracy of the information being provided to people in the citations isn't having an adverse impact on the rest of their lives beyond the receipt of that particular citation or the commission of that particular incident that hasn't even had a court date yet?
We can go ahead and answer that at a later time.
We can go ahead and answer that at a later time, more in depth. I will say, don't believe everything you read. Allow us to go ahead and really give you the background, and then I think from there you'll have a better understanding, and then we can go ahead and address that once we, once we have our presentation, we can go ahead and then readdress it. Is that okay? Okay, thank you.
Sure, I'll just, I'll hold off until I have your presentation and re-ask the question.
Well, we'll be ready to answer that question.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to jump, we're going to jump into the presentation from the state's attorney, and I know there were, yes, go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Commissioner, and all the folks that are here from law enforcement. Just from your perspective, as we transition to hearing from the state's attorney, what is your assessment of how well frontline officers understand the citation docket? I know that you and State's Attorney Bates are in regular communication, but it, just from an agency leadership perspective, is your sense that it has translated all the way down the chain of command and that folks have internalized the processes and procedures for it?
And I'll let Colonel Jones answer that, but I'll give you my opinion from, we had a policy before about this with least, less intrusive, most effective, least intrusive, and we also had a lower, low-level offense policy that they had to use before. We just pulled it a couple of years ago. We went right back to that policy and we basically sent it back out to, some of our officers weren't here at that time, and we pushed it out, the policy and how to do their citations now. Everybody's not perfect with it, and we catch the citation before it leaves. If it's not done correctly, it doesn't get forwarded, so there's nothing that can be done for it. And I'll let Colonel Jones speak more on it.
Good afternoon. So I think where we are with this, in my personal opinion, is any tool that we have on the tool belt makes us better, makes us well-rounded, it gives us options. I think this is another option that we have. I think either through Power DMS, roll call training, this is a generation of officers that have not had this as an option, so we have to keep reminding them that this is an option. Many officers have explained to us, you know, we hear it all the time, either from the community or someone else, of what officers can't do. We've empowered them to take advantage of this in reference to lower offenses, so this is something that has to be pushed down in roll call, this is something that has to be pushed down through Power DMS and the delivery system of best practices and what we see as troubleshooting on issues, whether it be identification and address and filling it out properly and filling out the proper charges. It's something that I believe that if we, we should inspect what we expect. And I think it's very indicative upon us in our CompStat 360 process to add the citations into our conversation of what districts are being successful, what districts are being low, why are they being low? Is the low numbers because of mere presence, that when an officer walked up or pulled up in a block, the individual dispersed and we achieved our end goal? Or is the low numbers because officers aren't, when they have the opportunity based on reasonable, tickle suspicion and probable cause, that they're not doing at least the minimum with the citation? So I think it's something that we're still in the early stages of, but we need to be consistent on pushing the narrative that citations is a viable option.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. State's Attorney, yours?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee. It's my pleasure to join you and discuss our new Citation Docket Initiative, which we enacted to curb behaviors that led to the quality of life issues in Baltimore. We use this program to hold offenders accountable while prioritizing and optimizing diversion efforts. We will provide you with the current Citation Docket we have captured and the goals we aim to achieve over the next few years. In order to understand the full context of the goal of the Citation Initiative, I must provide some historical context of the Citation Process, including the past performances and how the city addressed quality-of-life crimes. Through speaking with thousands of city residents, the overreaching message that I have heard continuously and I continue to hear is their frustration with the previous decisions to no longer hold individuals accountable for misdemeanor crimes, which they feel adversely affected their quality of life. That is why on day one, moments after I was sworn in as 26th State's Attorney, I turned to the former police commissioner and said that all the tools are now available in the toolbox. As a newly-elected city prosecutor, my office has begun holding everyone accountable for their actions. Since BPD is currently under a consent decree, the way the police are able to police differs considerably from other jurisdictions. So it doesn't prevent our dedicated law enforcement officers from constitutionally engaging individuals who choose to go afoul of existing laws. Rather than ripping the Band-Aid off, we collaborated with law enforcement and community partners to devise a process that could benefit all parties involved. Unlike every other jurisdiction in the state which continues to arrest and incarcerate people apprehended for quality-of-life crimes, we decided to take a different approach to holding offenders accountable. This led to the creation of Citation Docket Process, which takes advantage of the state law that was passed in 2012, providing guidance to law enforcement agencies issuing criminal citations instead of making arrests. This law was spawned from the case DeWolff, who was the former public defender, v. Richmond, which addressed monitoring issues related to the representation of indigent defendants as they tried to find alternative ways to arrest while still ensuring that these individuals were held accountable fairly and equitably. Our Citation Docket does precisely that. The goal of the Citation Docket is not to arrest or incarcerate our way to a better quality of life in Baltimore. Our goal is to use a citation tool to allow law enforcement officers to interrupt criminal behavior, making the environments that they have deteriorated around our city due to the lack of prosecution that our city's residents can now enjoy their neighborhoods without feeling unsafe. The goal is to disrupt the culture of unaccountability that has allowed individuals to believe this type of behavior is either lawful or acceptable in our city. Simultaneously, we are prioritizing our diversion efforts to connect individuals to vital wraparound services to help put their lives on a better path. A successful Citation Docket will not have hundreds of citations listed on each docket. The fewer the better, because this means we have curbed illegal behavior and no longer need citations to achieve a better quality of life. That means BPD officers are using verbal warnings in place of citation or arrest. That means that people are paying attention. That means our efforts are working. A successful initiative will see our older adults able to come outside their homes and walk down their streets in their neighborhoods. Parents can once again allow their children to play outside in their communities without fear of people using or dealing drugs or urinating on the playgrounds in front of their future generation. Let us reiterate this point loud and clear, so that those who are seeking to cause dissension and confusion through misinformation can better understand this: We are not looking to arrest individuals for those quality-of-life crimes. Our goal is to curb the behaviors that led to the decline in the quality of life in Baltimore City. We have gone a step further through the 2012 law to engage with local organizations such as Hope, B360, and Monzy and others to provide direct wraparound services to individuals who appear on the Citation Docket. We offer resources that may need in order to connect, that they may need in order to connect them with services ranging from employment development, substance abuse treatment, housing, safe programming, education, and more. This second, this summer, I deployed my community engagement team to neighborhoods across the city. They knocked on over 5,700 doors and engaged 752 businesses, organizations, and/or direct service programs. They learned that while residents want people to be held accountable for their actions, many also want offenders to have the opportunity to get their life together. This is part of the NEST, the Neighborhood Engagement and Safety Tour, also known as NEST, provided information to individuals around the city. For instance, we gave individuals our breakdown, our flyer explaining the Citation Docket process to everybody so we could give a better educational, one-on-one communication style. We also will be, as many know, that a lot of community associations, they shut down for the summer. We will be in all the community associations around the city during the fall and winter to explain this process, allow us the education of everybody. As you can see from the documents submitted, there was a dramatic increase in number of citations issued in the years following the passage of this law, and that's documents that talked about 2012 law. In contrast, it nearly doubled the number of citations issued. However, each year after they continued to decrease as people began to curb their behaviors, you can again see the ultimate goal of the Citation Docket is to have fewer citations issued, because now they understand the behaviors that are lawful and that are allowed to happen and should happen in the city. This is important to understand because there are dissenters of this initiative, and we understand that, who would have you believe that this process was somehow created as a dream that I had. It wasn't Ivan Bates's dream, it was understanding to meet what were the best practices from not only locally in our state, but also around the country. As if citations never existed before, what leads to mass incarceration, when in fact, this exact opposite of locking people up for those nuisance crimes. Given that every other jurisdiction across the state of Maryland has continued to issue citations and never stopped holding offenders accountable for these exact same crimes, and make no mistake about it, these crimes are, that's the law. So the only thing that my office is doing is trying to enforce the law the legislature and city council put together and passed to make sure we do it in a way that doesn't lead to everybody getting incarcerated or people being locked up. Baltimore City for the past four years was the only jurisdiction in the state that was not enforcing the law. Yet, we have not seen incarceration, a significant rise in alter, or alter cases with law enforcement that led to a tragic circumstance in any way of these jurisdictions. That includes Prince George's County, a minority-majority jurisdiction like Baltimore. Still, there were no repeated reported racial disparities in how law enforcement held people accountable for their crimes. Misleading talking points may sound good to activists who would like you to believe this from high up on their perch overlooking the streets of Baltimore, or from those who see our city in a view from their county homes. But I can say this with certainty, that Baltimore residents such as Ms. Johnson, Northeast Baltimore, are sick and tired of having to walk into this, up the street and go around the individual groups that, young men that are blocking the sidewalk on York, Pennsylvania for her just to get wings from Pizza Bowls. Also, I can tell you about Mr. Anderson over at Christ Church Harbor Apartments, frustrated by his sleep constantly being interrupted at 1:00 in the morning by the dirt bike riders, or dirt bike boys, as he calls them, who want to rip donuts on bikes outside their building while others blast their music due to nightlife crowds down the street. Antoine Lewis told me he was grateful for the recovery services he provided because he was never afforded the opportunity to choose treatment or demand when he was incarcerated three years ago, but rather he just got clean, cold turkey in a jail cell in central booking for possessing two capsules of heroin. We aim to help these people by offering services, not throwing them behind bars. These aren't problems we need to incarcerate our way out of, however, we cannot turn a blind eye, ignore if these crimes have not become nuisance to the hard-working, tax-paying residents of our city who continue to play by the rules and not break the law. We allow people to do what they please when they feel like it. You open the floodgates to lawlessness, much like we believe we've seen in Baltimore the past few years. I want to thank members of the judiciary, as well as our crime-fighting partners who issue these citations, including the Baltimore City Police Department, the Sheriff's Office, who have both, who are both, and I don't, Sheriff Kogan isn't here today, but also the Morgan and Coppin State Police, University Police, University of Maryland Police, MDTA, MTA Police, Amtrak, and ATC. They all came together to help hold individuals accountable, therefore working together collaboratively to get the word out, no matter where you are in the city, about what the law is and what the rules are. They provide with the necessary wraparound services to everybody so we can touch all aspects of our great city. But of all of those who are celebrated most in helping to move us forward, this service forward, one agency has continued to refuse to be a part of the solution as various agencies required by law to help many of those who have become, who have come before the Citation Docket, like those indigent individuals who were the centerpiece of Mr. DeWolff's case I mentioned earlier in 2012. The Office of the Public Defender continues to allow the political philosophy of the few to overshadow the effective representation of many. As Comar states, "Legal representation must be provided to any indigent individual at all stages of criminal proceeding, custody, interrogation, preliminary hearing, arraignment, trial, or appeal." The Citation Dockets are arraignment dates, yet the Public Defender's Office refuses to participate in the Citation Docket process, leaving individuals confused about the legal rights and opportunities being afforded to them by the state. I think Councilman Burnett, you referenced an article where I read about a gentleman who came into court, thought Citation Docket was good, had an open container, got to court, and when you go to court, it's a very terrifying experience. I represented many, many individuals. When you go to court, you don't know what's going to happen. You're going to go to jail, you're not going to go to jail. You're scared, you don't know what's happening. In the past, and you'll be able to hear about the historical context, the Public Defender Office, they would sit down and talk to these individuals, figure out whether they have substance abuse, mental health issues, do they need a job. The article I read about a gentleman who lost his fiancee and lost his mother. Truly trauma right there. That individual needed to make sure their representative talked to the state to say, this individual needs the wraparound services to deal with trauma. Now, our office did refer them to the Hope Program to hopefully get a job, but we could do so much more if we all worked together. We need to meet the problem head-on through a constitutionally sound interactions and warnings that help alleviate the legal behavior and allow for opportunities to be directed to resources and services for those who need them. I do not believe in burying my head in the sand and wishing a problem away. Now is the time to be bold, decisive, and innovative in our approach to law enforcement. I will pause here and allow my ASA, Trish Deros, and my deputy state's attorney, Greg Solomon, to provide additional facts and perspective on what the courts have done regarding holding individuals accountable. What I'll also say is both of these young ladies, I have over 60 years of experience between them, specifically dealing specialty courts in our city. Ms. Deros has been a state's attorney for 33 years. I worked with her when I was a young prosecutor, and I've worked with her now as the state's attorney. And Ms. Solomon also has 27 years of experience, and both of them have been dedicated their careers to specialty courts. I thank you for my time, and now I'd ask them to go ahead, to be, Ms. Deros, to go ahead and lead to talk about what's going on with the Citation Docket.
Can you use your mic?
My name is Patricia Deros, I'm an Assistant State's Attorney. I have been with the office for over 33 years now. I began in juvenile court and moved to justice court.
Can you make sure to speak into the mic? Thank you.
I began in district court in 1993 as a regular ASA. In 1999, Mrs. Jessamy, the state's attorney at the time, had a vision of creating a community court in Baltimore City, and I was asked to be that community court prosecutor. With the Greater Baltimore Committee, the Abel Foundation, the Maryland Judiciary, the Baltimore State Attorney's Office, the Office of the Public Defender, and numerous other problem-solving agencies in the city all came together. We did have funding for a community court in 1999. We had a building on Gay Street that was in the process of being built. In the community court, much like the one up in Red Hook, New York, we were going to have all the wraparound services needed for individuals who have been arrested for a minor offense. Community Court never came into its existence because under then Martin O'Malley, mayor for the city of Baltimore, he directed the District Court of Maryland to create an early resolution court, which took all the cases that would have gone to community court out of the community court, so the funding kind of fell apart, and the district court was then created the early resolution court under Martin O'Malley. At the beginning of the early resolution court, individuals who were arrested on minor crimes were brought into the district court at North Avenue within three days of arrest to be offered services. Unfortunately, it was overwhelming. At the time, it was the zero tolerance policy, and we had two Assistant States Attorneys assigned to that docket, me being one of them. We had 500 cases every single day. It was overwhelming. The state gave the Office of the Public Defender funding for an additional five public defenders to support that court and to meet with all of those individuals and to provide legal guidance on whether to accept the state's recommendation or to take their cases to trial. Because of the sheer volume of those dockets and the inability for us to actually serve the public in a good way, the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council came together and we established a work group. It took three years for that work group to come together and come up with a plan to make the early resolution court actually a working court where we could provide services for all of those individuals. Most of those individuals were advised, arraigned, and had public defenders who assisted them in the process. They were offered community service, and we had drug diversion. Developed out of the early resolution court was a prostitution diversion program where individuals who were engaged in prostitution were brought before the court. We had three social workers through a grant through GoCap at the time, and the Public Defender's Office worked with us, and we dealt with individuals who were engaged in prostitution. Over the time, we had a success rate of about 50% recidivism for that population. That's an excellent number across the country. But in, and we had that until 2020 when State's Attorney Mosby decided not to prosecute low-level misdemeanors. So the programs went away, so we were unable to provide assistance. Through the assistance, through the social workers, we also worked with Project Turnaround. We gaged those women in job training, we engaged them in trauma therapy, we engaged them in drug treatment, we found housing for all of those individuals, and it was a very successful program. Also built out of the early resolution court, we understood, we found that a number of individuals were homeless. individuals were homeless, and because of their homelessness, if a court postponed a case, they did not receive a summons, which was an issue. So the court commissioners and the judiciary and the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council at the time came up with a plan that we developed where defendants that were arrested were receiving a court date in early resolution court within a couple of days so that they didn't lose their paperwork, and if a court date was postponed, that it wouldn't get lost in the mail because there was no place to be. The docket for homeless persons was held three times a month at the early resolution court at North Avenue, and we had treatment providers in the courtroom to engage in services for all of those individuals. We had the YES Program, healthcare for the homeless. We had a city agency there that helped the individuals look and see if they were eligible for any city benefits or state benefits to assist them. We had Miller &amp; Healthcare Access to help them get insurance, and all of those were available, and we did not, if the individuals charged, as long as it was not a crime of violence, all those individuals charged that were homeless and their crimes were based pretty much on their homelessness, we would postpone their cases out ninety days. If they engaged in the services and maintained contact with their case managers, their cases were dismissed, and the public defender immediately filed for expungement from their criminal histories. Also based out of the homeless docket, we then found that a number of the individuals who were homeless who were committing minor crimes, including major substance abuse issues, were veterans. So out of that docket became the Veterans Treatment Court, which became established in two thousand and fifteen, of which I am the prosecutor for the Veterans Treatment Court. We have, over the last eight years, our anniversary is Veterans Day in November, our recidivism rate over the eight years is less than five percent, and that's because we have all of the wraparound services that are needed for veterans that are not only VA-eligible, but we also take those that were other than honorably discharged, and we have numerous treatment providers that are available for us to work with to provide services for them. So out of these cases, and these cases all include citations. Citations are not new. I have been prosecuting citations for over thirty years. They have appeared on every district court docket. In two thousand, the citations were moved to the early resolution court, but prior to that, they were on a trial docket, and there were not wraparound services offered for citations. We prosecuted them just like we prosecuted any other case. In two thousand, we offered community service, and we continued to do that up until twenty twenty when we stopped prosecuting those cases. So citations are not new. We just have not done them in the last several years. The citations dockets deal with the quality-of-life crimes, and we understand that, and we understand that the individuals sometimes need more services than we can provide. Our goal is eventually to get a community court here in Baltimore and be able to provide all the services, wraparound services that we are able to provide and were able to provide in the homeless court, the veterans' court, and the prostitution docket, as well as the adult drug court providing substance abuse treatment. The citation docket is a work in progress. Citations have not been issued in over three years. Many of the law enforcement agencies prior to this year did not issue citations. The Baltimore City Sheriff's Office historically did not issue citations. Loyola University did not issue citations. Coppin University has not historically issued citations. Most of the time, they called their district command and had those individuals arrested on campus. The University of Maryland, who also patrol part of the Lexington Market, have issued citations in the past and will again reengage and issue citations as quality-of-life in their community. The MTA issues many citations and historically have always issued citations as a primary charging document for quality-of-life crimes. They are historically in the Lexington Market area dealing with the quality-of-life issues there. And there are numerous other agencies that are coming on board who would choose to use a citation as a charging document as opposed to arrest or a criminal summons. It was a slow start, but we expected that. Agencies are just coming on board. In July, we had, in July, there were sixty-two defendants on the three citation dockets. There were, out of those, ninety citations had been issued, several defendants had more than one citation. Virtually all of those are business license cases, which the Alcohol Tobacco Commission and the Comptroller's Office do issue citations for those low-level crimes, and historically they have done that as long as I can remember. It's very rare that they actually arrest anyone or go get a criminal summons. They're almost always done by uniform criminal citation, and historically, if the individual store owner comes into compliance, we've agreed to null process because the goal is for them to be licensed in the communities, and they are quality-of-life. If your corner stores and are not licensed, then you have a chance that they're not being inspected. Several of these cases were restaurants. If restaurants don't have their business license, the Health Department's not going to know and not going to go do a Health Department inspection for food safety. So a number of the citations in July were based on the Alcohol Tobacco Commission and the Comptroller's Office.
And just for clarity, those citations go to whom?
I'm sorry?
Those citations go to whom when it's a citation on a restaurant? To whom does that citation go to?
It goes to the business owner who is not licensed.
Got it. Do we know what percentage of the ninety issued citations were that?
Of the July citations, I believe... Yeah, it was thirty-four. It was a majority of the citations of the individuals were.
Thirty-four.
And historically, they, those citations dated back until April. The District Court did not docket them until we began the citation docket in July.
So thirty-four of the ninety?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, please continue.
In August, the, there were forty citations issued, thirty-one defendants. Again, Alcohol Tobacco issued multiple citations, and the MDTA, when they issue citations for CDS, sometimes they issue two citations not knowing what the substance is going to be, and that would have to be amended. Altogether, in July, we had four individuals that accepted community service, and those four individuals completed five hours of community service in exchange, and those cases were advanced and null-pressed prior to their court date. We did have two individuals that rejected community service offers. We did have two individuals in July that did reject community service. They were not interested in proceeding, and they were advised by the court to get an attorney and how to go get an attorney, and we, at the courthouse itself, there is a court commissioner awaiting their arrival for them to do their financial screening, and then they're referred over to the Public Defender's Office for the application process. And that is in each of the three courthouses during the docket, those individuals are available and ready to take application for individuals who want to go to trial and want to have a public defender represent them. The, a number of individuals, which we'll go to what Councilwoman Barnett said, they received summonses in the mail from the District Court for each of the July dockets. Summons are mailed, just like in any other criminal proceeding, to the defendant, to the address that the defendant provides to the officer, or to the booking officer, or to the court, or whichever the ID that they presented when they received their criminal citation. So a summons was generated by the District Court of Maryland and mailed to the address that the defendant provided. Our agreement with the court is that we would ask the court not to issue warrants on the first citation date, that we would ask that the court reset the case for the next citation docket and reissue another court summons from the District Court of Maryland. And in July, there were thirteen resets and reissues to defendants. In August, on the return court date, the second date that they were summoned to appear, when they did not come for the second time, then a warrant was issued by the court. So the defendants received notice on two prior occasions to come to court before a warrant was issued for their arrest. And that is the same, if it happens and they're arrested and they go to court and they don't appear, normally a warrant's issued for their arrest. If it's a criminal summons case where the defendant, where the victim goes or an officer goes and gets a charging document from the court commissioner, and an address is provided, and it's mailed to the defendant, the defendant is put on notice. If they don't come, generally, we reset and reissue another time to that same address. If the defendant does not come on the second time, then a warrant would be issued for their arrest. There's no other way to achieve personal service on the defendant to notify them of their charges. Now, these defendants have all been notified of their charges. They were handed a charging document. They know they were charged with a crime. They provided the information to the officer, law enforcement, of where the summons could go, and they chose not to appear. There are other mechanisms for them to, they can look their name up on CaseSearch if they didn't have a trial date, or if they moved. They didn't provide the court with the information to support not issuing a warrant for their We're working on training. We have created what we call a cheat card. So a number of officers don't correctly fill out the citation. So we're in a technological age now. Most officers are not used to handwriting charging documents. They all have it computerized. These are handwritten documents, and the charging language is very specific. That has to be handwritten, and a lot of the officers are out on the streets. They don't have access to a computer where they can look up charging language. So we have created a card that will be a one-page back-and-front card that will have all the most common charging language and CGS codes required so that the charging document is legally sufficient. We're going to get that made through the city. We also, historically, there have been issues with the charging documents. In two thousand and fourteen, the Baltimore City Coordinating Council Subcommittee on Warrants came up with a suggestion because of the number of legally insufficient charging documents that were being issued by the Baltimore City Police. Historically, eighty percent of those citations were null-pressed and not legally sufficient. Were not legally sufficient. The Coordinating Council and the District Court judges directed that those cases not be docketed, and this is back in two thousand and fourteen, that they not be docketed, that the Baltimore City Police have an internal review of their own citations, and those that they deem legally insufficient be not docketed and letters be sent to the defendants that were charged, that the cases would not move forward. Based on that, they have, the Baltimore City Police have an internal reviewer, her name is Tiffany Griffin, who I trained a number of years ago, and she reviews the Baltimore City Police criminal citations for legal sufficiency. As of the two dockets that I have had, I believe that only three citations have been, we have been able to move forward as legally sufficient as issued by the Baltimore City Police Department. I do get a list month, weekly, of those that the internal review for the Baltimore City Police have rejected as legally insufficient and not able to move forward. I've asked for that list because many of the defendants show up for court with a copy of their citation. They're not docketed, and I don't have an explanation as to why it wasn't there. So they provide me with the copies of the charging documents and the list, and I'm able to tell the defendant that it won't proceed and that they're free to go.
Can we, can we jump into that for a little bit? I think that's a pretty important point. You said there's only, in the last month, month and a half since we've been doing this, only two to three citations that we've been able to either forward or accept from, on the state's attorney's side, from BPD? And that's a decision made by BPD or a decision made by the state's attorney? Made by BPD?
We actually have an internal process that if it's not done right, it won't even be forwarded. But if they want to the docket, then it would most likely, I think.
Did those get forwarded to you, the ones?
I get, all, the ones that are legally sufficient are sent to the District Court and docketed.
Yes.
Those that are not legally sufficient, I get notice of because I need to know who they were, and because the individuals, many of them received a trial date at the bottom of their citation, and they show up.
Sure.
But they're not on the docket, and I don't know why they're not on the docket. So I've asked that they produce a list so that I can look up their name and citation number, and I can explain to the defendant why it wasn't, why it's not going forward and that they don't need to worry about the charge anymore.
No, that's super helpful to know.
This is a training issue that our officers obviously aren't doing correctly. The card will help a great deal, but it comes back to supervision. The supervisor has to look at that, the officer has to write it correctly. And she's exactly right, as our officers have moved away from writing hand citations. So now we're, because they've done, they're doing everything on their phone. So we're trying to come up with a way with Axon where the officers can actually do it on their phone and print it out, or send it electronically. So that, those are the things, because that would make it much easier because regardless, if they write something incorrectly, just one or two words that could, changes the charging, the case is no longer any good. So those are, that's the training that we have to give our officers. But we, we have a system that should be able to adjust it to work with that. That's why Axon was chosen and why they were giving their RMS and our case management, and they need to fix that for us so that we can do it electronically, print them out, and not have three or four go forward, but have everyone go forward. Because basically, we're wasting our time and we're wasting the citizens' time because they're going to court. And then I like the idea, I never knew that idea, we had done that in the past, is issue a letter from our department that, hey, the citation was written incorrectly, you no longer have to go to court, the citation was voided.
Right.
So that the person isn't wasting their time to go down to court.
Also, in an effort to, you know, address the deficiency, we sent a request to our education and training in reference to putting out another guidance in reference to civil citations of the do's and don'ts and best practices. So that will be delivered through Power DMS, but they have some other policies that they're trying to get out first, but that is one that is on that list to be administered throughout the whole agency through Power DMS.
That's super helpful to know. I'm curious, do we know how many attempts, how many attempted citations? So one of the, one of the big things that I feel we need to address as soon as possible, but would really help me wrap my head around how this, how this effort's going so far, is, one, interactions, and maybe that's a lot to track, but I know certainly we track interactions otherwise, interactions around citable offenses that never lead to a citation. You know, we tell guys, you know, you got to move off this corner, or you can't drink in public, and they stop. We never have to write the citation versus those that turn into citations, versus those citations that are then accepted and then forwarded to the state's attorney's office, and then we eventually go through the full citation docket process. I would love to know that breakdown over time and how things filter out. And then once we get into the citation docket process, how many people are showing up? How many? How many people fail to show up and ultimately end up with a warrant? What are those circumstances? Certainly, we don't want situations in which folks who get cited are already on the edge and end up further over the edge as a result of not showing up for court because they can't get transportation there. And if there are creative ways to make sure that folks don't miss that court date, I don't know if we could do virtual hearings or something like that, if that would be something that is possible. Down to, you know, finally, those that accept services and the outcomes of the folks that accept services. You mentioned with the, the veterans docket, how, was it five percent of people ended up being recidivists or something?
There's a recidivism rate of less than five percent over eight years.
Less than five percent, that is a phenomenal metric. So I, I think, you know, that's what we would love to see.
That would be our lovely goal for the community court. If you have the services and they're available and the people want to engage and agree to engage, you can be successful.
Okay. Can we start here?
I was also gonna say something. I think, one of the things also I think is important is that, first, we had to bring everybody to the table, and when you look to see everybody from the sheriff to MDA to the police department, we had to bring everybody to the table. And we do recognize it is continuously training over and over and over again, but we also recognize, like, BPD already had the checks and balances in BPD to say, we can't use these types of citations. It's so, I can't describe the amount to just lay the proper foundation amount of work that has gone into this, and now we'll begin to grow it. But it's just like, you know, I give an example of my mom's rolls. I love my mom's rolls. After church, she goes and bids the ingredients. We got the ingredients. We've rolled the rolls. Now she had this white Tupperware thing that she put on the top of her freezer to go ahead and let the yeast rise. It's rising. And what we're realizing that when it rises, we can't rush the process. BPD, they're young officers. They haven't done this, and if you don't do it specifically correct, then the citizens won't believe the checks and balances is in place because we're just running around with, you know, defective documents. We're going to make those mistakes at the beginning so it can work better. That's why I've always said, a year, a year, a year. We have, you know, benchmarks that we need to make before we can sit down and say, okay, this is where we really are. And I must really say, I'm extremely impressed with the fact that the, that the program worked within BPD to check and correct and acknowledge the, the wrong documents. Because when that gets out, that's what leads to not believing and trust in the police department and not believing and trust that the, that state's attorney's office is gonna sign off on everything. And so from my standpoint, when, I think earlier I was saying, we'd say, we believe that we're being successful where we are within the benchmarks. We knew this was gonna happen because there's too many people at the table to start something new. But we are moving in the right direction.
I actually, I actually, I agree that, and the majority of them, we have hundreds of warnings, but there's a really difficult way to track warnings because we don't know when we get out of the car, they stop the behavior, or it's like, hey, you can't do that anymore, they walk away. But I'm not happy that only three made it out of the department, but I am happy that the forty-seven bad ones got caught, because that shows that we're policing ourselves. And usually what happens when you have something like that, that citation or that report will go back to the officer who wrote it with guidance on what mistakes you made and what you have to do to fix it, in hopes that they don't do it again. Now, what we have to do with Axon, and until we get that, we're gonna have to do it by having our districts fax them to us or email them to us, and then we gotta look at them manually, is to make sure there's not any repeat offenders who continually make the same mistake. If that's the case, then that person needs more training. And I think next, as we move into more in-service training, I think this is probably something we work with our academy to make everyone go back to the academy for a day. Even if it's only four hours or two hours, they can take the two- or four-hour course on how to write the citation, and then they've got training as opposed to, when we put on Power DMS, they sign on it, they sign for it, that they accepted it, that they know it. We don't know that they really read it. I'm hoping that they do. I'm hoping that they follow it. But if they're in a classroom and have to go through it, that's a little different. And I think we, if we're at this point now, that's probably something we need to implement because we're clearly not doing it right, but we are catching it. I applaud the officers who are trying to do it, but we've gotta fix it moving forward.
Yeah, I sort of look at this very similar to the way that I look at all the training that we had to do under the consent decree, and a lot of that, we had to send folks back to the academy, or we had to find more creative ways. And maybe we can tap into some of those well-worn methods of preparing our officers for changes in the department and tap into that.
Counselor, Chair, I just would say, to the state's attorney's point, he's right. Getting the interactions correct in the beginning is gonna pay dividends in reference to our relationship with the community, right? But I will say, for your, in talking about getting the data for interactions on the front end and then the back end. The back end, I think, is a lot easier of the citations and the court processes and the resources and the outreach. I think we can track that. My concern, though, is on the front end, when there is just an informal interaction with an officer and a civilian. And I'm in Fells Point, and I see an open container, and I see something, and I'm like, hey, cut it out. That's not really going to be a way of tracking that. So I'm just saying, we have to look internally of, there's gonna be some data that we just don't track because.
What is it, what is the threshold for relevance?
There was not really an interaction, there was a conversation. So I just wanna put that out there, that that's gonna be some discrepancy that we have on the front end.
I appreciate that. So you're essentially saying, you know, we need to set a threshold for relevance because there are a lot of interactions where officers are telling people not to do things. We'd be, you know, awash in, in that kind of data. I appreciate that. Thank you. I would really appreciate, and I wanna then open up to questions, because I know we've talked a lot about the prosecution and court docket side of things. I really wanna touch a little bit on the police department's process. Can, can you guys walk us through what the current SOP is around the citation docket? What officers have? You know, you mentioned we're using notepads right now, and it's a written citation, which has caused maybe some, some issues with the current rank and file. It is my understanding that, and this may be wrong, and so I hope you can correct me if it is, but for instance, for loitering, and in some instances, loitering is actually drug dealing, it's just we haven't, you know, we haven't padded them down or anything like that. But for loitering, and this is a personal issue because it's happening right outside of my district office, it's my understanding we have to issue a verbal warning, wait fifteen minutes, do another verbal warning, wait fifteen minutes, citation, wait fifteen minutes, arrest. Is that the case?
The way I understand it, and Colonel Jones can explain if I'm, when you issue a warning, if you come up again and the person walks away, you abated the problem. So it's a continual process, mainly because, and then you have to be able to articulate that you saw the person interrupt the free flow of pedestrian traffic. Or vehicular traffic. If not, then just standing on the corner isn't considered loitering. They're just standing around. So those are things you have to articulate, and I'll turn it over to Kevin Jones if he wants to add more.
No, no, that's true. So, you know, each and every interaction is its own entity. We realize that, you know, me being homegrown from Baltimore, we had to understand that sometimes if I drive past a location, I see a guy from thirty years ago, yes, I'm out there on a corner, I'm in front of a business loitering, but there is no malfeasance here. There's no negative impact. So we're trying to balance that. Getting out of the car, engaging even in that informal engagement, that's what we want. You see something, this is a problematic area, a problematic business, somebody has been there for a long time, it raises the hairs on the back of your neck, getting out of the car and walking up and asking about the Ravens game, asking about, hey, is everything okay? That's least intrusive, but it may still abate the situation. So the individuals, and if there is no articulable reasonable suspicion right there of something going on, then there's no need to. The individuals walk off, the officer does what he does, but then ten minutes later, the individuals come back. That is now a second interaction, but it's still the first one. You know what I'm saying? So they, they abated it by leaving, but they came back. And that's some of the, the obstacles that the officers are dealing with, of individuals who unfortunately are playing this cat and mouse game with them. They see the officer's car pull up. I dealt with it earlier today myself at eighty-three and North Avenue, continuing getting complaints about eighty-three and North and the solicitation in the roadway. I dealt with it. They saw us, they drove, they walked away. Soon as I left, I heard another car come out for that same location. So it's something that we have to abate, when the officers are making those warnings and giving those citations, that's when it starts every time based on the, the number of occurrences, yes.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you. I, I think my, and I don't know what the solution is here, because I think we're, we're doing all this in the context of the consent decree, and we certainly don't want to be overbearing, especially for low-level crimes, but the process feels a little bit clunky.
Yeah.
You know, if you have to have an interaction fifteen minutes, another interaction fifteen minutes, then the citation, you're talking about a half hour out of an officer's day where we all know an officer doesn't have that, that much time. I, I don't know legally what, what we need to do, and even beyond legally, what best practice in, for communities' sakes makes the most sense, but feels a little bit clunky, and I'm not sure how to fix that.
No, I, I would agree that it's clunky. I just think off of best practices, when you look, not only for something, I'm not gonna say simple as loitering, because we know it's probably some other things going on.
Right.
Right. So, but I would say, if you talk about just loitering, look at it in the same realm that we deal with protests, where we deal with homeless individuals. Once we give them, we can't just go up and say, hey, you can't block this intersection, you can't do this, you, we're telling you right now, this encampment is not for your best health, we have other resources for you. Unfortunately, you're going to have to relocate and use the services available to you. And we give them that leeway because we're dealing with individuals who are under substance abuse, we're dealing with individuals who have different behavioral needs, and their understanding of what may be said. So you're giving them the multiple times to correct and course correct is just in our best interest, but I will agree, it is a little clunky sometimes.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that. I'm gonna run down the line. Councilman Cohen?
Mr. Chair, thank you, Commissioner, State's Attorney, all of the folks that are here. Clearly, our city has a dark history of mass incarceration. We also had a former state's attorney that simply did not prosecute minor crimes, which led to an enormous amount of frustration. It seems to me like this program seeks to find a path that both acknowledges harm caused by minor offenses and holds people accountable while also providing treatment, services, and other options for folks to avail themselves of. To me, that feels like the right approach for our city, with the caveat that it is going to take time, effort, and energy to socialize it all the way up and down the various chains of command. My question, as someone who's spent a good amount of time working with agents, city agencies around trauma responsive care, substance misuse, putting pure navigators in our, you know, Pratt libraries, is just how to aggregate resources and make sure that when we say we're gonna connect someone with treatment services, that we actually get them there, and that we make sure they go through the program, and that we follow up and provide kind of that wraparound approach? Because I think that a lot of the, what I see in my district and as I go around the city, is that a lot of the minor crime that we see is interconnected with either trauma or addiction. And that addiction fuels a lot of the petty theft that we see in our communities and contributes to just incredible frustration among residents, but that is driving a lot of the misery. And so if the approach here is to try to bring people healing and relief and treatment and recovery, then are there enough resources out there, and what are we doing? And perhaps, this is for Ms. Peggy, Director Peggy, is how are we making sure all of the treatment options are there at the table and that we're able to take advantage of them?
I'll go ahead and start, and then I'd like to turn it over to Ms. DeRos. I'll give a, you know, a thirty-thousand-foot view. One of the things that, and one of the reasons I asked Ms. DeRos to give you the historical context, is to truly understand how, you know, when you deal with these quality of life issues, you deal with courts, understanding the relationships and how one builds on another. So she's done a phenomenal job, they've all done a phenomenal job of lining up the service providers. However, when I also mentioned the public defender's office not being there, they're the group, the organization that sits there and talks to those individuals to find out some of the issues and some of their concerns, so that they can, we can better direct them. The public defender's office are not there. One of the things I think we need, we need to think about now is, maybe we reach out to find out, can we get social workers who will sit down and maybe interview an individual? But we also have to balance the fact that these are still criminal charges, they may not be that comfortable talking to a social worker, and making sure whatever they tell a social worker is not used against them in a, in a criminal manner. So we're trying to figure that piece out, because in the past, the public defender's office was there, so if you had an issue, you had a mental health issue, they would say, hey, Ms. DeRos, you have this program over here, I think such and such would be really ripe, or this would be a good person to be evaluated for, you know, mental health issues. But if they're not there, then imagine this, Ms. DeRos in the courtroom, there are twenty people trying to talk to her at once, and she has to enter talk in line of people, and the court's getting ready to start within thirty minutes. That's why you always have the other individual on the other side of the room doing that as well. Now, if some people come in with their own private lawyers, it moves a lot smoother. But if you don't have that, then it's a little disjointed. Ms. DeRos, can you go ahead and talk about, you know, how you're working with this in terms of all the providers as well?
We are working on a MOU with MONC and Baltimore City Department of Social Services. The Hope Center has actually come to court, we invited them to come to court. They are a nonprofit organization, and they provide services to the court. They have peer counseling, they refer to mental health, they refer for substance abuse, they help individuals get vital records, they will help them get their social security card, their birth certificates, their Maryland ID. They will pay the fees for those if needed. They help them get access to Maryland healthcare access, they help them work the paperwork through to get their health insurance, they help them with assistance with housing referrals, they offer a certification program if individuals want to be peer recovery specialists. They offer individuals who don't have housing, mailing address can be used at the Hope House. There is a laundry facility, they serve breakfast and lunch three hundred and sixty-five days a year. They have computer and internet services, individuals can go in there and use their computers and the internet to search for employment, housing, or whatever emails they need to send. They have showers, and they give tokens for documented medical appointments. Hope has come into the docket. I did invite many individuals who showed up for the dockets to go out and speak with the Hope Center. I can't really engage defendants in conversations because they may say something that can be used against them, and I don't want them to talk in depth to me, because if they don't wanna participate, their case is going to go to trial. But I do tell them that Hope Center will meet them outside of the courtroom, and if they would like to engage in services, I don't need to know what they're engaging in, they can talk privately to Hope Center and engage in any services they want. One individual did take me up on that offer, and he is working with the Hope Center. And he was the gentleman in the newspaper, in the Sun Paper article, Mr. Glover, who said, I need a job. So he's, they work with the Mayor's Office in Employment, and they are working with Mr. Glover. They are also working with Mr. Glover on other issues that brought up in the conversation. His initial reaction was, I want help with a job. But when he went outside to speak, they said, well, we can help you with some other things too. And he is now engaged with the Hope Center. That is the only treatment provider that has been successfully been in the courtroom. It is helpful that they actually be physically present so that people can engage. If you're sending them to different locations in the city, chances are, they are never going to go. Which was one of the benefits of all the problem-solving courts and early resolution courts, is we had the treatment providers there. Prostitution court was on Mondays. All the treatment providers came every Monday, sat in that front row, and we could direct individuals. Homeless court docket, the treatment providers were there that afternoon, they could go out in the hallway and engage in all the services. For Veterans Treatment Court, we have fifteen treatment providers there three times a month to meet with. Court, we have fifteen treatment providers there three times a month to meet with these individuals, to see what else they need, if they need of any services. It's imperative that you get the treatment services providers there. Community Service, Baltimore City Community Service does come to the docket every month in all three buildings, and they register their individuals right there in the courtroom, right outside the courtroom for their community service. We don't have to worry about the defendant having to come down here to the Cummings Courthouse and registering for community service. It's done right at the courthouse and they're given their work assignments right then and there. So it's convenient and they don't have to go anywhere. Community Service reports right back to me as soon as it's done, and I bring the case right on the docket and I enter a null process. We don't lose people if we have the treatment providers right there. And we need to engage more treatment providers, and we will be reaching out to more treatment providers. The Hope Center is working with me to try to get some more education. Who can we get to come in to help with education assistance for these individuals?
Yeah, no, and again, I do appreciate, and I think this is, to my mind, the right sort of balanced approach that you all are seeking to take. Let me ask the question slightly differently, and I think, Ms. Deros, you're kind of getting at it, which is, this is like a big problem in our city, right? Like, we lose almost a thousand people each year to overdose deaths, which we don't talk about as much, nearly as much, as we talk about our homicide numbers. But that's a thousand of our neighbors that we're losing to this disease. Baltimore is one of the most addicted cities in America and has been for a long time. It was ground zero for the opioid crisis and the war on drugs. It is a big problem. Just when you think about kind of the scope and the capacity that is needed to effectively address the immensity of the amount of folks struggling with addiction, whether it's fentanyl or heroin or whatever the case may be, where are we now and where do we need to get to? Because I do appreciate the work that the Hope Center does. I think it's a great partnership and connection, but just knowing the, some of the enormity of this challenge and thinking about different providers and peers and folks like Tiffany Scott, who's on the Governor's Opioid Restoration Council, just thinking about how we're pulling all these people into helps solve this problem.
Well, now that CDS possession, not marijuana, can be charged by criminal citation, we will start seeing more and more people individually charged with that.
Can you talk into the microphone? I know some folks are having trouble hearing.
The citations, now that they can be charged by citation, we are starting to see an increase in the number of citations issued for CDS possession. Those who do not have an extensive criminal history of violent crime, we're working with the Baltimore City Adult Recovery Court, formerly known as Drug Court. We now take DUIs. That court, our intent is, we can't offer it at the citation level because we don't have a chemical analysis yet from the police department as to what drug, so we can't prove the case. It's not a viable case until we have a chemical analysis. And it takes us about forty-five days to get the chemical analysis. So we don't have it at the time of the arraignment for the citation. So we're actually placing those on a trial docket. However, I've noted in the trial docket notes for our judicial dialogue that this person would be eligible for what we're calling ARK diversion, which means they wouldn't be prosecuted, but we would refer them into our Adult Recovery Court. And in Adult Recovery Court, we would then give them a drug assessment by the court drug assessor, find out what their assessed needs are. We have a clinical coordinator through what used to be BSAS, and he would then arrange for, depending on what the assessment says, a treatment, a drug treatment program, whether they require inpatient or outpatient. We would then submit that. It may be that they go to Baltimore Station, or they might go to any other of the inpatient treatment providers, if they're homeless, or outpatient treatment providers, depending on what their assessed needs are. We're going to have them meet with a case manager. They will not have all of the conditions of an Adult Recovery Court defendant because they're not on parole or probation, and they don't need all of those services. We'll give them case management. We'll give them drug referrals, and we'll give them everything other than the necessary parole or probation and the criminal conviction.
And if I may jump in as well, this is small scale, but we're scaling it out so it can be a lot larger. But we had to make sure the infrastructure was appropriately first. We had to get all of the partners in terms of the law enforcement community, the buy-in, whether it's the University of Police, I think even Loyola is coming on board, MDTA, everybody, BPD. That's the first part. We also have to make sure we get the providers, service providers, to buy in, and that's where we're working on the MOUs and everything like that. That's the making sure there. So we also work on BPD with the training aspect. That's why I say this will be a lot bigger, a lot larger. We believe we'll be able to scale it to a lot, so that it touches everybody. But once again, I like to remind everybody, our job as prosecutors, we hold people accountable. We're elected to try to do it this way, where it's not about criminal records. And we had cases with individuals completing community service, their cases are dismissed and expunged from the record. And, you know, Mr. Glover is a perfect example of an individual at the Hope House who is able now to have hope. These are small stories, but in a year from now, we hope to have a lot more of these stories that were saying, okay, you came involved in the criminal justice system, but something positive came about that. We were able to get the resources you did not know. So we talk about community court, about four or five years will be there because imagine having a location, a building, where all these resources are there instead of the court system there, but yet your son, your daughter, your child, you can go down there to put them in a drug treatment program. So I do, you know, I wanted to really get that through. I know we're kind of maybe living in some of the weeds with the small aspects, but there's a lot more. We wanted to try to explain it as much as possible of really the amount of work that really goes into this.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. I'm gonna make sure we get to the rest of folks here. Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks for the detailed explanations about, you know, the history of doing specialized courts, because I think that it seems like it has worked. And getting back to that is going to be important. I had two questions. One is, in your, Mr. State's Attorney, in your testimony in June, or July, whenever we had our budget hearings, June, your PowerPoint here had a few more items that would be added to the citation docket, one of them being malicious destruction below a thousand dollars. This would be our graffiti artists as well, I believe. And I have plenty of them along Greenmount Avenue. And so in the presentation that we got today, that I think you flashed up your card that said, you know, the items that would be citation offenses, I see malicious destruction of property, so I think that's really good. So are we, it looks like the list is similar, but I don't think that there are some, the same things in there. So you're gonna, you said earlier that you're gonna grow this to other types of citations. Is that right?
Well, that is correct. But if the law allows for a citation and the police or MTA or whomever, if they decide they wish to write the citation, then yes. Our goal is to say, hey, whatever citation you wish to write, we are here to uphold the law. And so, for instance, solicitation, prostitution, you can't write a citation for that. So now we're kind of stuck, like, we don't want to arrest, but what do we do? And so that's where we're trying to think outside the box. But yes, yes, Councilwoman, malicious destruction, yes. If we need to add some, but right now, when we go, when my team goes out and knocks on doors, they try to explain the law as much as possible. But those are also things that I would definitely, you know, speak with the Commissioner to make sure that maybe we have a more, a fuller understanding of the, or call it the cheat sheet, we can give to the officers so they can have the language with that as well and other issues.
I think that'll be helpful in terms of what are the things that fall under each category so that they understand that. And then I had a question for the Lieutenant Colonel, so I'm gonna ask you, Commissioner. He had mentioned in his previous testimony just a few minutes ago about the fact that one of the things that has to be taught or given to the officers to really implement this is that this is an option for them. Can you explain that a little bit more? Because I thought that it wasn't going to be an option, that this is how we do it. If these offenses are happening, then they're getting a citation. What is, I'm just trying to figure out exactly what that, what that word option means.
No, for the last couple of years, it wasn't an option. We just didn't do it because we couldn't do it. So now it is an option. It's the third option. First option is just the officer being present to abate it. The second one is, hey, you can't do that. You could get a citation. They probably warn them more than once. And then third or fourth, whichever one the warnings are, is a citation. But if we issue a citation, we gotta do it correctly because if not, you're not helping anybody because the person is not held accountable for it. They're not able to get the treatment that they want. That's the part that we have to work on. But that's what the Colonel meant, is that it's now an option that we never had a couple of years ago because citations went away. And that's part of the problem with what we're dealing with. A lot of officers who are issuing citations probably weren't in patrol two years ago when we stopped doing it. So they're new to it, but they have all the incidents that they can use. But when I was an officer, I used to keep cards in my pocket all the time with cheat, like the State's Attorney said, with a cheat sheet for different things that I'd pull the card out because I couldn't remember all those things. But if they have the, like, the card is going to be great because they could pull it out and copy, rebate them instead of carrying a bunch of stuff with them. Until we can get it done electronically where there are drop-down boxes. That's the, I mean, that's what our younger generation is used to. A drop-down box, press a button. But that's something we gotta work on, ax on to make sure that we have it there to move it forward.
I just think that it's gotta be very clear that, yes, you, you know, you didn't have it before, now you have it again. And I guess they have to make a decision at the moment what the best, you know, course of action is, but that this is the preferred way of doing it and that, or not, right? Like, you know, the young people on the corner of Greenmount and Venable, or Greenmount and Thirty-Four Street, I don't think that they've gotten citation. I can guarantee that that's the case. But that mean, that is probably the best option, or the best, that should be what they get, not even an option. It's like, this has to happen. So I'm just trying to make sure that they understand that this is the way to go and not just that, eh, we're gonna leave it, or eh, we're gonna arrest them instead, or eh, you know, I don't, I'm just trying to figure out exactly what that is.
The problem with the loitering is that you can't just go to, you have to go through the process.
With the consent decree, you have to go through the, I understand.
No, that's, it's not just a consent decree. It's actually the law that you have to go through the process. And if you, it's frustrating because I've been through this even as an officer. This changed a long time ago. And if you've come, if you come upon someone who's loitering and they walk away, even if it's the third or fourth time you told them, there's, you still abated the problem by them walking away. So it's frustrating, but most of the time, they won't walk away until you get out and address them. But, and even with that, there are specific things that have to happen. You have to see the flow of pedestrian or vehicular traffic walk around or move around that person before they're considered loitering.
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to get, maybe just take that example out, but that the officers know that, you know, this is the practice.
No, some of them, if you told somebody on Friday, they got, you can't do an open container, and they're there Saturday, clearly they didn't get the message on Friday, if they remember the same person, or if they wrote a warning, if they did something where they wrote down the name or a warning, or however the officer elects to address it. But the good thing is, most of these are resulting into the issues being abated, which is exactly what we want without a citation. The person's walking away or heeding the warning and just leaving or stopping the behavior. And that's ultimately what we want.
Right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I wanted to go back to the question I had earlier about the wrong information being provided on the citation itself. And so were you, I just wanted to make sure I'm closing the loop here. You're saying that even if the wrong information is provided on a citation, two additional notifications would have gone out prior to the court date. I just want to make sure I understood what you're saying.
That's correct. They receive a summons from the District Court directing them to the right courthouse. The information that was in the Sun Paper was the defendant went to the wrong courthouse. The defendant was given a citation that was mentioned in the paper, which told him to come to North Avenue. His case was actually one that belonged at the Hargrove District Court. Now, he didn't come on July seventeenth to the North Avenue District Court. So his summons was sent there, but he failed to appear on July seventeenth. He was then ordered to come to the Hargrove District Court on the August date, and he did appear for that. So he did get a summons in the mail to tell him to go to the correct date place.
Well, and the reason I was asking that is the...
Numerous, numerous citations, especially issued by the MTA, had the address of fourteen-hundred East North Avenue. Because the last twenty-three years, that is the address that has been on the citation. So there is a learning. We have sent all agencies the arraignment date list and location of where each citation should go. Whether it has been distributed to all officers who are issuing citations, I don't know. I have resent it after each docket. When I look at citations, I have notified the MTA to notify Officer XYZ to please use the Hargrove District Court because the citations are at the Lexington Market area and that's where they need to go. But for the last twenty-three years, all agencies have only used fourteen-hundred East North Avenue, and they're going to be making that mistake, and we're going to have to correct it. But the summons generated by the District Court of Maryland tells them the correct courthouse.
Okay. And so my concern is, either way that this program is kicked off and there are, seem to be some structural challenges that are leading to bad information going out, or in the instance of BPD, a lack of training for officers who are issuing citations incorrectly. Can you speak to, because, I mean, another thing I would say, Mr. Chair, is, you know, I don't believe that there's representation from all of the entities that are listed here. And it would be helpful in future hearings to be able to talk to folks from the Morgan State Police Department, MTA. I mean, we learned through their presentation that most of the citations have come from the Transportation Police. They're not here. And so I think having, one, I guess, is there a convening entity that is working through all of these sort of hiccups with any new program? And I do understand that when you launch something new, there're gonna be unintended consequences. I get that. With, I guess, convening entities at your office, Mr. State's Attorney, that's pulling folks together to try and work through these kinks?
Yeah. I would say, and that's why when I started, I talked about the experience that my deputy, as well as Ms. Deros, have, the sixty years of experience. So there are things that, to be honest, I would have never thought of. For instance, the citation by MTA. Well, I would have wondered what was going on. She was able to dissect that to realize for twenty-three years, but also making sure she sent the information over and over and over again to MDT, MTA. I think that's fair. But we're the ones, the State's Attorney's Office, Ms. Deros and Deputy Solomon, they're the ones who've really taken this from the ground where there's nothing and began to build it. And now we're just, we're dealing with the hiccups like anything new. And, you know, but I will say that I think that their experience has allowed us to avoid other issues.
Okay. And the reason I'm raising this is, you know, the most serious outcome of somebody getting misinformation. And I'll note that, like, you know, we moved and my wife didn't realize, she hadn't updated her ID for like a year and a half, so still had her old address. So, I mean, there are like legitimate reasons why somebody may have given an, a piece of identification that they didn't even realize, hey, I've moved twice since then, or I was recently evicted, didn't get a chance to get down to the MTA to change my license. Now I've missed the two, I may have, and I'm just giving an example of like, what could go wrong in that, like, I have a citation that has the wrong information or sending me to the different courthouse, and I haven't gotten the other two pieces of mail because I don't live at that address anymore. Now there's a bench warrant out for me for something that could be as small as littering. And, you know, we're tying folks up into, you know, the criminal justice system. Some of these, these things, I agree, are very, you know, are serious criminal activity. Some of them, like, you know, soliciting a hack, you know, in that instance, like, doesn't really, I think, necessitate the potential for a bench warrant to be issued, nor do I think it's a good use of the court system's very limited resources when we already know that there are delays in dockets, that folks are, you know, that the system is, you know, not running always as smoothly as it could be. And I know that that's not always in your shop. Clearly, you know, the court system is not in your shop as far as their operations. I'm not putting that on you, but I'm just saying that, like, these are the kind of things that can tie, easily tie someone up from a small offense, which is why you're doing it in the first place, into something a lot larger that can be life-changing if we don't really get these sort of structural impediments tied together in a way that, you know, the mistakes can happen or we're very limiting the likelihood. the mistakes can happen, or we're very limiting the likelihood that a mistake could happen. And so that's why I was asking about, how are we pulling this together? How are we reassessing, you know, the outcomes of these programs along the way, and pulling all of these entities together to make sure that we're, at least on the governments, and things are running smoothly? The other thing I would ask from Mr. Chair is, the lack of data provided to the council on this is pretty shocking. We had two presentations from your office and the Police Department that did not provide us how many citations that were issued, the neighborhoods that those citations were issued in, the demographic information. I'm glad we got two reports here that talk about citations, but I don't know that these are really helpful in that both of them show that over, in one instance, 57% of the citations issued statewide were African-American males. So if we know that there are the potential for over-incarceration or over-engagement with black men in the city of Baltimore, which we know this data is statewide, but I would imagine if we did actually track those interactions, the data may show something very similar. And so I think it would be helpful for us to be more transparent through this process, so that we can better assess the effectiveness of the program. But more importantly, we're in a consent decree for a lot of those very same reasons, that there was bias in policing, over-interactions with minority populations, whether it was LGBTQ community, or the black community, particularly black men. And without that data, there's no way for us to really hold you accountable to how this stuff is actually working out. And so I think it would be helpful for both BPD, the State's Attorney's Office, and all of these other entities that are issuing citations to provide that information in a public way, so that we can assess, is this working properly? Is it effective? Are we actually achieving the goals? And more importantly, are we enforcing this equitably? Because one thing we know, something like drinking outside is happening in Canton, and Fells Point, and Fed Hill, and it's happening in West Baltimore. Where are we issuing the citations? What are the demographics of who are we issuing them to? Who are we giving warnings to, and who are we not? Because those are the mistakes that we made in the past, and I just don't want us to go back to that.
No, I agree, but once again, I just have to keep harping on it. You got to give us some time. Those reports that you see, they actually took a year to really say, okay, now let's really look at the data. Because we're trying to get the data, do the infrastructure, have everybody, talk to everybody at the same time. We are going to have that data, but it just takes a little bit of time. And that's why I was giving the example of the, you know, with the rolls. Like, we right there in that Tupperware on top of the refrigerator, they rising. When we come back, and we, a year from now, we're going to have the data says A, B, C, and D. But that's why we also looked at the law from 2012 to say, okay, we're not reinventing the wheel. Without a doubt, we want to make sure we do that. But before we can really even do that, we got to get the people, our law enforcement partners, all of us working on the same page, making sure the citations are done properly. And we will go ahead and we'll analyze that. But there's so many moving pieces with this, without a doubt. We will get that data. We want that data. That data is very, very important. You know, I have jumped up and down with my people, but I also have to be honest to say, hey, looking at the amount of work and the heavy lift of bringing everybody into place, it was more important that we had a really good, strong foundation. Like I said, I was very excited to see that BPD's checks and balances worked properly to kick out 47 citations, to say, okay, this is improper. Because in the past, that would have never happened. We'd have charged these individuals. That could have been a blemish on their record, and we'd have worked so much harder to try to remove that blemish. So that part is working, but we do have a long way to go, without a doubt. I hear you 1,000%, and we will definitely make sure we get on that.
And I agree, the fact that we rejected them, plus, since we've been in here, we found out that our auditor, what happens is when it's rejected, a copy of the citation is sent to the officer, the sergeant, and the district auditor, telling them why it was, why it was rejected and what needs to be done. So they're getting good feedback on that, so that's part of the checks and balances. Because like the State's, Mr. Bates said, in the past, they'd have just left our department, went over to the State's Attorney, and it went on a docket for something that was not going to be, it wasn't done correctly. So that's why the checks and balances are working. And I don't know if you had come in yet when I explained about, we've got the duties hand, they're handwritten, so Axon has to get us some kind of tracking mechanism that makes it easier for us to track it, because they're our records management and our RMS system now, and they built it for us. So they can build this in there too. It's just a matter of getting the engineers to do it.
Yeah, again, I just, and again, I understand you're building the plane and flying it at the same time. So I am cognizant of that. My concern is just going too far down the road, and we look back, and the data shows that we've been making the same mistakes we made in the past as far as who is being cited, who isn't being cited. Because one of the things, there's unlimited amount of data that shows that whether some, that, you know, whether you're black or white, a percentage of folks are going to be drug users. A percentage of folks are going to be drinking outside. But we've seen in the past is that there has been a, you know, white folks are not being cited or issued citations or arrested for the same offenses that black folks are doing in the city, across the country, in almost every city across America, we saw that happening. And without the data driving your decision-making, and your training, and your protocol development along the way, you get a year later, and we see that there's been an over-incarceration or over-citation of particular groups, because we didn't really catch it early enough. And that's really what I'm pushing at, is that I think for us to assess the effectiveness, and for you all, as you're, you know, trying to get this off the ground, that that would be helpful to put, sort of higher up on the priority list, so that we, you know, we aren't sitting in front of a judge again, having to explain why, you know, 60% of the citations went to black males, and yet we know that you're a white male, you're likely to drink a beer outside too. So I just think, you know, making sure that we're not making those mistakes is critically important. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. I want to squarely agree with you in that regard. There was one of the questions I was going to ask next about the demographic information, and making sure that we are aware of our interaction with certain communities, certain races, race groups, noting that we are under a consent decree. And I think, you know, this policy, of course, has got to balance those interactions with the outcomes we want to see. And I think another really important part here, and I think is just as important to all the tracking of enforcement and otherwise, is who we're helping and what comes from that help. You know, we talked a little bit about the Veterans Docket, and how that's, you know, significantly reduced recidivism amongst those folks. And, you know, if there's anything that we can learn from those efforts, I think we want to make sure that we're taking advantage of those lessons in this endeavor, because we can certainly mess it up, we have in the past. But we can also get it right. We can also learn from previous mistakes. We can learn from zero tolerance, and make sure that we don't do that here, and that we're sensitive about some of the ins and outs. I also appreciate, you know, from the police perspective, the nuance in your work on the street. You know, I had an opportunity to do a ride-along in the Eastern District, maybe a month ago now, and I had a lot of questions about exactly this policy and how it worked, because I can tell you, as I was riding around the Eastern District, everywhere I saw people with little handbags, which we know, a lot of times, there were guns in those bags, and very obviously drug dealing. And, you know, my curiosity was, how is this policy affected interactions in those instances? And then, you know, also, how does this policy help improve some of the other quality of life concerns? So this is, this is not an easy issue, and I appreciate you, Councilman, for bringing it up, because I think it's a one that we should always have, not in the back of our mind, but certainly in the forefront, realizing, you know, the long history of our department, and how mistakes we've seen in the past have led to where we are today. So...
And that's something, after our last, not this past meeting, but our last quarterly meeting with Judge Bredor, he made that very clear, that he was very hesitant, not hesitant, he was cautious about us writing citations. And I can assure, I assured him that we will do it right this time. As I said in many of these hearings, I lived through zero tolerance, and it didn't work. And we won't ever go back to that, because it alienated the community that we're still trying to build back. So that won't be accepted, and the fact that we're going to continue to look at these and monitor them, that's why we need a system where we're not hand-counting them, that we can electronically sort them, however we need to sort them, map them on a map that shows exactly where we drove them, and make sure that it's equitable.
Yeah. And, you know, I think on the flip side, appreciating the attempt that we're trying to make here to address real problems in our communities. And Commissioner, you and I had a pretty long conversation about an instance, an issue in my district, like I mentioned earlier, right outside of my office, that we've been having issues with for the last couple of years. So I think, I'm hoping that this policy, I'm hopeful that this policy, as we get it off the ground, we're able to get, you know, more effective citations out there, and make sure that we're providing resources and opportunities for folks to get on the right path, making it as easy as possible for people to do the right thing. That's ultimately what I want to see out of this policy. I know it's a tricky one, but, you know, appreciate the thought that's gone into it thus far. I'm going to hand off. Councilman, do you have any other questions?
No, I mean, I think I'll conclude. Appreciate all the complexity brought out today, and I, you know, do just want to say, I know this is for a separate hearing, but clearly what we read in the Brooklyn Day report was disturbing. And if we do not have communities like Brooklyn have faith in law enforcement, this program won't work. No program, whether it's a citation docket or any sort of public safety apparatus can't work if people don't trust that law enforcement has their best interests at heart, and that the kind of complacency and disregard for that community, it just really undermines this type of program that we're trying to do here. So I know it's for another hearing, but again, appreciate that we're trying to come at this, I think, a different way. Definitely respect the desire from my colleague to see a deeper level of data, and who is being issued citations. And again, will just commit myself that if we can be helpful from my seat as councilperson or in the Trauma Informed Care Task Force in supporting lining up some treatment providers and other folks in the mental health and social work fields, definitely want to put that out for you all as a resource. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Ramos.
Just as a reminder to have multiple languages available with the citations and summons and all of that, because we have a lot of people in the city that speak different languages and could utilize the resources if they are offered. So want to make sure that that, when you're doing the cite, the forms, and how you're ever going to do them, to just make sure that people have the right language. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Burnett? Thank you. One, I want to appreciate you guys. I know we've been trying to get this, this meeting on the schedule for a couple of months now. I know initially, we thought this would be, how, what are we rolling out? What can we teach people? And now we have some information to learn, but I think there's so much more we still want to learn. And as we think about the data systems that we're using to collect interactions, or citations, or follow-up from those citations, prosecutions, if we do get to that, that we're, you know, thinking about this along the way and trying to be as smart as we can, because I think it's really important that we get this right. I think we, as a city, are, of course, struggling with violence, but we're also struggling with this, like, a lot of this low-level stuff, which is not, it's not insignificant. So I want to make sure that, you know, as we go about this, we are communicating as much as possible. And if there's, once again, my colleague has already said this, I will share in that endeavor, and I'm sure anybody who is in this room or not in this room is willing to offer anything we can in order to make sure that this goes off without a hitch. So with that, this hearing is recessed. I want to thank you all, and we'll see you at our next meeting.